Good evening, everyone. It is January 25th, 2022. This is a special meeting of the Board of Education for the Wellington Board of Ed. It's a special meeting because it's a budget workshop. It is right now 6:04. So let's get underway. We'll call the meeting to order and start with the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you would join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You're making me put, buddy, put their mic on for that. I feel like I'm the other person. So I think we will, we'll try, I'll remind you next time when we all put our mics on. So it sounds like there's all of us together jointly.
Mine was on, but if I stand to the side of my computer, it doesn't pick me up, I think.
Okay, doesn't matter. I'm sure everybody knows the words we said and could say it along with us in their sleep. So at the start of our meetings, we always have a present to speak where we allow the public to comment to us, the board. It's not for us to comment back, but we ask that if you're interested to please give your name and address and keep your comments to three minutes so that we have time for everyone to talk as well as for the meeting to be efficient. So with that, do we have anyone currently on the call who'd like to speak to the board? Okay, and seeing no hands, which is usually not the case, we will jump right ahead. Oh, and I just see Herb has joined us. So we will give him one second to come on. Hi Herb, can we test your mic, please?
Yeah, it's on.
Okay, we can hear you. Great. Okay, we're just moving ahead from the, we finished the present to speak. There was no one to speak, so we're going to start and hand it over on item four to fill the introduction of Superintendent's 2022-2023 Proposed Spending Plan.
Shuffle some things here so I can see some folks.
Just a reminder that if there's background noise at all in your area, or if you're going to be using things on your desk, if you would put yourself on mute and take yourself off mute when it's your time, when you wish to ask a question, but otherwise there's sometimes background noise. Okay, go ahead, Phil.
Thanks. So first, thanks. The budget process obviously is a long one for us. It's pretty intense. It's a lot of going back and forth. And it takes a lot of collaboration. It takes a, you know, a good team effort to do it. I just want to thank the folks that really play a big part in this process. Obviously, it goes through staff members giving feedback first and, and really then goes to the administrators where they fine tune it and they send it off to me. So thanks to my admin team who are all with us this evening. My assistant Brenda does a ton of work on the budget with me. And then obviously, our business manager Donna Letinsic. Just hours of collaboration, going back and forth and getting us to where we are today. I will tell you that the budget will be on our website tomorrow. We were literally still making edits today. Just trying to finalize some of the things that, as you know, new information comes in, we try and catch it and update as quickly as we can. Dental insurance changed today a percentage, so we updated the budget. So simple things like that, where we can get lower, we did. So the first task I want to complete is just a quick walk through the budget. I'm gonna, you all have this in your email. Some of you picked it up today and sorry if I'm gonna make the folks dizzy on screen, but table of contents, I'm just going to show you what's in this. This is on page five. It lists all the items, the documents. So we have the 10 programs. That's how we break our entire budget up. It has, this budget has the enrollment information. It has program summaries. It has staffing information and then some of the assumptions that we go off when we, when we create this budget. So if we go to, back to page three, I just want to make this connection. The board goals are on page three. And why this is important is really, this is the, the North Star for us. As we create it, we should be able to tie every item to something as on one of these goals. And we do. So as far as student growth and success, obviously, this is a primary for us. And so a lot of the things that are in this budget are directly linked to this. You have the school culture and climate items, you know, welcoming environments, things like that that are on here as well. And then we have the sustainable and strategic investments. And that's the long-term stability of the district. There are fewer of those items simply because that really gets more towards the buildings, but I will tell you that there's things in here that are maintenance related or things that we'll look, we'll look at that are just long-term investments that make more sense than not doing them at all. All right. Those are the goals. I'm going to fly to page 24 and sorry again if I'm making you dizzy. So this starts, the, the appendix starts with the instructional summaries. And I'll let you read these on your own. I'm not going to read through them. Each of the administrators had one except for Aaron. So there's one for special ed. There's one for hall school and there's one for center school. So we threw Lisa right in and said, you know, you've been here for two weeks. Please write an instructional summary for us. And she did. And so it's just, it's broken up with just a general overview of their program. Some of the points of pride and then their goals for the upcoming school year, things that they're working on. Many of them are continuations of what we did this year. Some of them are continuation of things we even started last year. So again, these align with the board goals and the resource allocations that, you know, were, are provided in this budget. I'm going to scroll down a little bit further beyond these. And again, you can, if you have questions about these, next time, we'll always have a question period. So that way you can read through this on your own. So I'm on page 29. And this is the grants page. And I will tell you that grants are a significant portion of your offsets. If you did not have grants, this budget would be a lot more money, probably over $600,000. So I just want to show you some of the grants that are in the budget. And they're also in the actual program. So you don't have to flip back and forth. We've matched them up. So there's a full page of special education grants. IDEA has a grant and we apply that money towards salaries and purchase services. And I'll, I'll talk to the specifics of what those things are when we get to the program. We have a second part of that grant, which is applied to the preschool teacher salary. We have the excess cost grant, which we receive back from the state. For any student that is outplaced or costs the district in excess of four and a half times of the calculated per pupil expenditure, we get a reimbursement. And so that is something that we build into the budget because we expect the folks that particularly are going to, in, in special education, that are going to cost a lot of money are going to end up, we're going to have some excess cost and we'll get it back. So it's built in as an offset. This is new this year. We have the SRTU Special Education Recovery Activities. So we applied $7,000 towards the wealth as an offset. We have Medicaid, which that money, we used to use do a basically reimbursement through the Medicaid process. And what happens is we determined that we were actually spending more money doing the work than what we were getting back. We were not getting a lot of money back in, in reimbursement in a smaller district and a larger district while worth it. So we actually stopped doing it, but there was still funds in the account. We use those funds as an offset this year in the budget. It's really applied to outplacement. In the general, general ed grants, we have the Title I grants. And we, it's Title I and Title II are together when we apply for them. And so we applied $66,000 to salaries. You'll see exactly where those are, their, their intervention folks at either building. We applied some funds towards professional development. It's an offset in Title II. In Title IV, we applied $7,000 towards the clubs at Hall School. And there's actually $3,000 in club money that's not an offset from Title IV that is for supplies. We have the REAP grant, which is typically technology-based. And again, you can see what we used last year, this right here, what we applied as an offset last year. This year, we have an offset of $17,800 for computer supplies and programs. And then these are the COVID grants that are still active. I don't anticipate these going too much further. The ARPESR grant will go beyond next year, one more year. But those funds will be pretty well expended and we know what it's going to be spent on. So SRTU, we applied $48,000. And the utility staff members are in this budget. You'll see them today. There's a complete offset there. And then the ARPESR is our Director of Curriculum Instruction and some of the, the balance of the, the utility staffs with insurance benefits and things like that. So there's the grants totaling $634,532. Without those funds, obviously, this budget is significantly different. And some of these go up and down based upon your student population. Some of these are one-shot deals because of COVID. So those are, that's kind of a high-level view of our grants. Any question about the grants? Okay, on page 31, we put together a, basically, this is a proposed 22-23 staff. And so what you see on here, one of my item, I'm going to point out on this page is that we have several staff members that work in both buildings. So when you see like .75 social worker, the other .25 of that person is at Hall School, their whole. Occasionally, if you see like .6 music, that person is .6 music. They're three days a week. Or halftime art is halftime at one building, halftime at the other. So you, sometimes you just have to match up. But the total number of staff is there. And the other piece you're going to see is sometimes it's, it's literally by hours. And this is really special education dictated. And so .27 is literally what that person's hours are based upon because of IEPs. And same thing with a .38. So that's the breakdown by school. We have some district folks. We added Aaron into Director of Curriculum Instruction into the district section, although we charged her off entirely to Hall School. And you'll, you'll see that tonight. All the center school staff, all the hall school staff, the others, because this is important to what we have for food services, what we have for shared office, with the business manager, accounts payable, payroll benefits coordinator, that's in the town budget, but it's, it's a shared service. IT, transportation, all of those things we built in. And so that's what you need to run a district. So we felt like it was important to have those items in there. So all of the staff members are down the bottom, district totals 111. What I'll tell you, some of these folks are not in our budget though. So these others, the food service is not in our budget. The business office is not in our budget. Transportation is built into the transportation cost. And IT is obviously in our budget. I am going to go back up now to what you probably want to see first. You're probably just looking at it now because it's the big one. Where are we? What's, what's the superintendent's budget look like? So this is the budget snapshot for the year 22-23. It's a 3.9% increase. It is, I'm going to tell you again, it's a tight budget and I'll tell you where it's tight and why it's tight and, and significant contractual constraints. There are some budget assumptions that we go off of. Many of them are contractual and I'll go through those when I go into program. You can see what last year's budget was here. My proposed budget, what the increase is. And remember that increase is $349,000 and then that's after all of those grants. So it's come down significantly because of those grants and I'm under four. So the, the budget assumptions. I will tell you that some of these budget assumptions are, we have more information earlier than we have ever in the past. So our medical insurance premiums are not going to increase this year. We actually did some legwork in the background and we are joining a collaborative with some folks on the western part of the state. It is not going to change our insurance at all. It's going to be the same benefits, same everything, same insurance card, but it's going to give us a 0% increase, which is great. So not having an increase there is important, although we are, insurance did go up and I'll explain why when we get there. The other piece of that is dental. At this point in time, we do not anticipate any more than a 5% increase. So that's one of the assumptions we're building upon. We always put in one placeholder for insurance, which basically means you hire Phil Stevens as a teacher. Phil declines insurance. Something happens mid-year where Phil Stevens now needs insurance and you have to provide it. And so that placeholder takes care of that to make sure you have insurance for that person. This is a, a crushing thing this year. We have not locked into fuel yet. Typically, by now, we have locked into fuel and it's been pretty volatile, as you can imagine. Last year, we were at 163. And this is for diesel and heating fuel. I will tell you, we budgeted an assumption, an estimation right now of 250. It's above that. We're watching it and if we see it come down to 250 or below, we're going to lock in right away. We wish we could wait longer and go to 225 if it happens. But we're budgeting for 250. We've never not locked in and we've never been at this point where we haven't locked in early. It's just been an up and down game and you're going to see the impact when we get to that, that program. Electric rates are flat. We, this went into effect of January 22, so it's the same. This is a big driver of the budget. There is another outplacement that we are currently, we currently have. It wasn't budgeted for this year. It's, so it's the next year's budget, three out, out of district placements. And to the tune, you know, we're talking, you know, 165,000 just for the placement. And I think it's in, it's, I'll get to it in special ed, but it's, it's, the transportation's expensive too. So that is a, a big driver of the increase of this budget. Even though, I will tell you, the hard work that Marcia has done with grant writing to try and bring the budget down, it's a big driver of the budget. We have transportation negotiations this year. We're anticipating, you know, just we estimated a 3% increase. It could be a little bit higher. It could be a little bit lower. That contract goes through June of '22. So there's in for that. And then the district is going to need cyber insurance. This comment was in last year's budget as well. And what I'll tell you is, we are not eligible currently for, for cyber insurance. Either, and if we are, it is astronomical. And the reason why is some of the things that we have to do in the background, like two-part verification login things, things like that are what's holding us back. And we're not the only district in this situation. When KERMA withdrew cyber insurance, it was all districts and people were, are struggling to find a competitive market here that's reasonable. And you know, it's, it's, so we're working with the town. The town's making some strides because they just did a change over on their, their, their security, basically. And we need to do the same at some point, but it's going to mess with our email is, is basically what's going to happen in our login. So we're working on that. I do not have this in the budget because I don't know what the number's going to be. And it might be something that in the future, we might have to look at non-lapsing or something like that. This is, I think it's important when, when people talk about, I mean, per pupil expenditure and how much it costs to have to run two schools in a small town, you know, where you have a couple hundred kids in each, each building. Shared services are really important. And we don't pay for business offices. If we didn't have that and we had to pay for a payroll coordinator and business manager and county analyst, you know, accounts payable, it would be more money. This is the stuff that we work together on and it's built into the town's budget. We share IT together. So we pay a percentage and the town pays a percentage. I think it's 48-52. We pay less. The town has more. The heating oil, electricity, diesel fuel. We just try and, we, we negotiate those prices together. It just helps us. The mowing and landscaping services, they take care of a good portion, not all, but a good portion of our mowing and landscaping services. We share the telephone system with them and we, we work on the insurances together. Not all of them, but several, many of them. So that's kind of the shared services are important. And then the unfunded mandates. I, I bring this up every year. It's always on my presentation because I think it's important. There were a lot of questions when we sent out the, the questionnaire about professional development. Why can't teachers do professional development in the summertime? Or after school hours? Or you already have two days built in? Why is that in the beginning of the year? Why is that not enough? The number of things that we're required to do that take time, suicide prevention, DCF training. There's a whole host of things of unfunded mandates that when legislature, when the legislator passes, we're required to do it. They don't give you money for it. They just say, do it, add it into your list. So there's a lot of those things. CPI training is, is de-escalation training. It's geared towards special ed. Marcia just did that recently and it's, it takes time to do that within our staff. The teacher evaluation process. If we're told you have to do so many observations, that takes time. They don't, they're not putting a dollar amount to it. But it takes time to do those things. Again, annual reporting, you see all the things that are on there, sexual harassment training. It's, many of those things are really, really good things that should be occurring. But there's no money to go along with it and that's why. So when we start talking about, we're you know, asking for more PD time, which we're very thankful was passed in the calendar, these are the types of things that are already in there and we want to add the more important things that are the, the, the student learning pieces that, you know, the curriculum rollout and the, the science of reading training. So that is what's in, in that section there. Any questions about anything on the assumptions page? All right, I am going to roll to page seven.
Herb has a question, but you have to unmute Herb. There we go.
I have a question.
Yeah.
In regard to the, under the development budget assumptions, on the three special education out of school placements, are those actual placements or are these simply placed in this in case we have, and I think last year we, we had two, didn't we? So we're three now.
Correct. So we have three outplacements currently and we anticipate that we're going to have three next year. We have no knowledge to, to say that, you know, that, that's going to change. So we don't, and, and this is the purpose, one of the reasons I think we have the non-lapsing fund is that if someone came in tomorrow and you had not budgeted for it, you could use funds from the non-lapsing fund to pay for it. Some districts plan for, just like you have a placeholder for insurance. Some districts have a placeholder for a special education outplacement. They had to put $100,000 into their budget in case someone either in district needs to go out of district or someone moves in. Typically, the $100,000 won't cover it, but it'll make it more palatable. That three that you see there are known. We have three outplacements built into this budget that we know about. They are not placeholders.
So we don't have to tap in for the fun for that.
You'll see it. We actually did to offset.
It's already in the budget.
It's in the budget, but we did tap into non-lapsing and I'll show you that when we get to that program. Good question.
Um, Phil, when you talk, talking about those outplacements, the 165, is that one student or is that total?
Oh, if that was total, that'd be a dream.
I know. It's one student.
That's one additional student. Yeah. Get there.
Okay, thank you.
So let me, let me walk you through kind of our, the process and just give you a sense of where we landed, where we are and, and what's been applied. When I collect those budgets from the administrators and I look through those requests, you know, we work to, to kind of refine the, the allocations. These are the reductions that are big that were grants. What you don't see, and I don't put in mind here because I don't think it makes sense. If, if I cut supplies from $500 to 450, you don't see that here. There are things like that that occur, you know, subscriptions that were, you know, what we were paying for 200 seats and now we're only paying for 100 and it's, you know, a $300 savings. I don't put that on here because it's not significant. Where I put, when it hits the thousands, I put it on because it's important for you to see those things. So you can see in program, you can see by program here, what's been applied to bring that program down. So it says grant savings and reductions. There's the only reduction that I will say that Herb just asked about is actually here, non-lapsing offset outplacement tuition. I'm going to suggest that you take $50,000 from the non-lapsing to offset your budget. It's built into my budget just to, for that special education cost. And you'll see why when you got there. So these are just, you know, just gives you a sense of, again, the reductions that were put in. And they're, again, they're all tied to your goals. You know, when we start talking about what they are, professional development, a teacher, utility staff, they're tied to the things that we are specifically working on in district and our goals. So let me get into then the enrollments and then I can get into the program. So this is new and this will be sent out to you digitally. Some of you got a hard copy of it already. So this is the, the actual enrollment, October 1, '21, and then projected enrollment for '22-23. And we just, actually, the school building committee had an enrollment study done by Peter Prouder. They paid for it. So you get the benefit of it. And so here's the, the actuals. So what we report is October 1 enrollment right here. This is what was reported. This 395 at the bottom, I gotta stop clicking there. The 395 at the bottom includes special education outplacements. We don't share what grades those are at, okay? Because we're too small. We don't want to do that. The next column shows the 2021 home rooms. So the numbers we have, it says pre-K 1. It's really an AM program and a PM program and that's why it says one. All the other ones, there's two sections of kindergarten, two sections of first grade, three sections of second grade. And you can see the class size that's next to it on the 119-22. I gave you a current. Okay? And now the itinerant is just services and that's what that three is. So if a preschool student comes in for just for services, that's there. Again, you can see the 119-2022 Wellington enrollments, the amount by grade, the total numbers we have. And then the next column is the projected. This is Proudest enrollment projection. And this is hot off the press. I think last week was the presentation. He's projecting for 22-23, 416 students. Some of it he's projecting because of people that went to homes, from homeschool and to homeschool because of COVID coming back. He looks at the number of births, just the movement, house sales. He looks at a lot and you'll see that in his report. And so that's his enrollment projection. What the next column is 22-23 is the number of home rooms that I expect next year. He said that there's 38. I have two kindergarten classrooms right now and we're going off of 35. We expect 35. We did the same thing last year. The number was a little bit higher. And then it, when the actual enrollment happened, it was lower. So that's again, always a hard number to determine. It's something that we're going to watch closely, obviously. Just because we don't want classes at 22 in kindergarten. And then you can see the sections just roll down. So with this number right here, with 31 kids currently, we put the 31 here. 34, 34. And it brings it right down with the same enrollment, 391. Those are the number of teachers that you would see at each grade level. So second grade, you'd follow it across and you would see two home rooms next year, two sections of 17. Okay? This is an important point. And Laura, I'll see, I see your hand because you're happening to be on my screen. Of the 19 students that went to homeschool, we've already had 14 come back. So it's, it's data that it actually happened. We, in early January, we had a bunch more come back. There's not many more students out there that went to homeschooling because of COVID that have not come back. The number's pretty small. There are some folks that are out there still. We also have some homeschool folks that just are, are doing their own thing. They've decided to homeschool and have never been in school. So that's the projection and a number of sections right now that we're, we're basing the, the, the budget on. Laura, you had a question?
Sorry about that. Yeah, I was muted. So I just noticed in
Sorry about that. Yeah, I was muted. Um, so I just noticed in um. Twenty-two, twenty-three, fifth grade, you have three home rooms. Uh, but then to the right, thirty-five students and only two class sizes. I'm wondering. Does it have to do with fifth and sixth grade sharing teachers or?
No, such a teacher, Laura, what a catch. So to run a middle school model, you have to have three sections. So we budgeted for three sections. This grade right here is too small.
Yeah.
To break into three sections. So that, what will happen is those students, as they rotate through, and my expectation will be that. Um, Mary Kay is principal of hall is going to take that, utilize that time with that person to either. Provide support in other classrooms. They could co-teach, they could do professional development, they could provide intervention, they could do a host of things. That would be a principal's job to determine what, how that person's time is going to be used. So typically, they'd have three sections a day. In that situation, they'd only have two. So there'd be an open block. The following year, it would be sixth grade would have it, and it would just move forward. If you eliminate that, that position, the problem is, is it's gonna happen every year. And we've lived this where they tried to do that and every year we were losing a math teacher or a science teacher and you couldn't find anybody. Unless you ran the middle school model. And so this is running that middle school model to maintain three sections. Fifth grade through eighth grade. Now, what I will tell you, and this is big picture, long term, um and Donna, I see you, you have your hand raised. Um, if you go to one building, you renovate or you build a new building. And it's pre-K through eighth grade, I will tell you, this model may change. What you may consider, and this would be a board decision, is you would wanna look financially. Number one, and number two, at quality, could you provide an elementary program through sixth grade? And run the middle school model, seventh and eighth only. It's something you can do. Um, and what that means is, is it means fifth and sixth grade teachers, just like. K through four, teach every content area. That's what it would happen K through uh K through six. Um, I'm not suggesting it now because it's it's um not best practice, really. When you're in one building, you wanna run one schedule. Um, and that's what they're doing in the middle school, five through eight right now. Donna?
My question has to do with the third grade. There's, I, based upon. Um, your proposed budget. And the number of students that you said, we're spending over twenty-three thousand dollars per pupil. And it seems to me that um with all that's going on and all the increases that we're. Um, kinda stuck with, that maybe the third grade class could go down to two. Because they are at center school and they have twenty-one kids per class. And that doesn't seem to be ridiculous to me. Um, and then that would save some money. Without sacrificing programs.
And that would be a board discussion. That's, so it's not in my proposal. But that's absolutely, you know, part of your discussion and and to determine if if the number of sections that I've put forward is is. Um, is what you want. What I will tell you is. Um. If you do that and you have students move in, and we've had this before where one grade level was uh on the edge, they were at twenties. Um, and that's where all the students happened to move in that summer, your classrooms are very tight. Um, and it's it's not easy task. So it's, I don't like to go under the fourteen. Um, I think that's a a very manageable size. Um, and I think that. When you start hitting twenty in those classrooms, it starts to get tight, especially with, as the kids get bigger. But again, that's gonna be, it's not my proposal, but that's obviously something that you would wanna discuss uh as a board.
Yeah, well, I, um, I had taken a quick look at the enrollment projection. Um, and it seems like enrollments in the state are going down. And Wellington is going down um lower than the state. Um, so I'm I'm not too concerned based upon the data you've provided that that's, I mean, not that it can't happen. But people are fleeing Wellington, not moving in overall with kids.
We'll, we'll get to his per, his presentation because he actually, he actually shows an increase in Wellington. So I will, I will share that. Um, it's, I think it's on the next board meeting that will uh, we'll go through that report. And Anne has her question up. Hand up, sorry.
Okay. Um, I think Donna, another consideration, when you start getting more than twenty children in a classroom. Um, even if COVID does go away, I think we we, it'll never go away completely and we still have to keep. Social distancing is an option. In case we get a flare up or something, and that would be really difficult to do with twenty, twenty-plus children in a classroom.
Let me scroll down here. Um, this is the twenty-year history. Uh, we put twenty years of enrollment data on. You can see the the slide. Um, I mean, when we were in two thousand two, two thousand three, um, we were at six hundred and four students. Um, or even earlier than that, it was higher than that. We've had the decline. And pre-COVID, I've I've argued, you know, if you look at nineteen, twenty, back to about fourteen, fifteen. We've had pretty, five pretty consistent years um pre-COVID. Um, we'll see if our COVID numbers now stay around four hundred or not, three ninety-seven, three ninety-two. We'll see what happens, but we were in that four thirty range um for five years, which is, you know, pretty consistent. Again, I don't have a crystal ball. I have one on my desk, doesn't work. Um, but what I'll tell you is, you know, we have to make sure we have the proper. Programs and and number of teachers in place for our, for the number of students. And within reason, right? Um, classes of ten, and it's why I didn't uh put those, that fifth grade group in. Um, into three sections, so. So any questions on that en- enrollment history right there? This is what we report out to the state. All right, let's get into some programs. So this is the layout and Brianna, this is really, um, I think. Uh, has everybody else lived through a budget now? Laura, did you live through a budget? Yes, right? Um, Brianna, this is really for you is the layout of the budget. So this is what they all look like. Adjusted means if any changes occurred at the end of the the twenty-twenty-one school year, which I'll I'll point some out to you when they, when they happen. The adjusted number falls into that category. The approved twenty-one, twenty-two is what we're currently living. And then requested twenty-two, twenty-three is my proposed budget. And as we make these, a- any, the board makes any changes, up, down, we would, uh, we modify this document. Um, into a new, basically a new document until it's uh adopted by the board. So starting with positions at center school, um, it shows the number of teachers that you have there. Um, number of secretaries, number of um, paraprofessionals is only, that's not special ed. That is, uh, we used to have the library media specialist there, used to be a paraprofessional. We used to have duty clerical staff. Uh, there, there's zero and zero. That means we don't have any, um, and I'm not requesting any. The secretaries that show up is one point six five, they show up in different programs, so it's not a one point six five position. There's actually two people there at center school. Part of one person goes to transportation, part of one person goes to um. Uh, into special education. And so it makes them whole, but they're charged to that program because that's part of their role. The point five eight that you see is how much of a teacher that we charge off to title one. Um, there's a dollar amount to it, um, that that goes off. So again, you can match these, this is not everyone at center school, remember? Because nurses have their own program, they're in that program. Maintenance has their own program. That's where those folks are listed. So this is a portion of the staff here that you see. You see the administrative um salaries, the teacher salaries, um, the cost for the secretarial, paraprofessional. And here's where the utility staff falls. So I went through our grants, S R two. And um, our um, our ARPA money, which is our 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 ARPSR money, whatever you wanna call it, in the grants. And based upon what I entered and the number of hours people have worked, sometimes we've had gaps with our utility staff. Um, there's still funds left. And so I put in you two, two point oh, I'm down one. Um, we would have two full-time utility staff I'm proposing, and I'm proposing this because, again, I don't have a crystal ball. I don't know what's gonna happen with COVID um next year and 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 I hope that we're done with this mess. Uh, but I can't guarantee it. And I will tell you, someone like um, the folks that we have right now, Brianna Knight, Ali Nizer, Tom O'Brien. The folks we have as our utility staff right now, when they need something in, at center school. And they say, we need coverage for this person for PPT, or this teacher's out. Um, you know, they've got it, they're, they've got a quarantine, whatever it is, these are the folks that are first jumping in. Um, and and maintaining some level of sanity in our classrooms. So I left two point oh in there. Um, it's down from one and it's specifically because it's what I can fully offset with the grants. Um, with the money that's left over. Um, and I think, and I'm not saying that you should add a third. I'm not recommending that. I think two is a good number. It's what we're currently operating pretty close to right now because two of those people are. Uh, working part-time, they're taking classes, it's working out for us. So I think two is a good number. Teacher salaries, the increase is there. Um, it's, for the most part, that's contractual. It's just the amount of money that the salaries have gone up. Maybe we hired someone a little bit lower, maybe we hired someone a little bit higher. Um, but this is the salaries that we're expecting for next year. Um, you can see the cost utility staff there. Let's get down to subscriptions. So purchase services. These are the services that um we need in the school system to operate, things like, some of them are educational, like the subscriptions. Something like um a reading A to Z program that we use on, with elementary students. Um, you can see that subscriptions has come down significantly. We have moved some of those. Um, into the um, we've moved some of those into the district level because they are district subscriptions. And some of them, we actually, um, with with grants from last year, um, we pu- we paid uh multi-year contracts. So it's not gonna stay at four thousand forever. Lexia is paid through twenty-twenty-three. Um, Read Naturally is paid through twenty, through twenty-twenty-three. We're going to recommend those next year coming back. So this number will come back up. You have a little reprieve right now because we committed to multi-year contracts. Power School is our student operating system. It's where all of our student data is sto- stored. If, it's, it's been flat, which has been great. Um, same thing with the copiers and and leases that we do. We try and save money with these things as best we can. Um, and we've been one flat and it's it's worked out. Telephone service came down a little bit, internet service went up a little bit. But what I'll tell you is we also increased our bandwidth, um, but we still have a great contract through um, through send. Um, we did, and so we put out for E-rate funding to get some money back. So to, it it actually costs about, I think it's around twenty-three thousand dollars for our internet. But with the E-rate grants that we we wrote, it costs the district a a around nine somethings. I think it's a little bit higher than that. So that money, thirty-six, twenty-four, is times three, um, town office building, um CES and HMS. So the the E-rate helps significantly. Um, again, postage meter, when we send stuff out, disposal services, you see those things there. The supplies, these are all of the supplies um for curriculum, everything, paper. Um, unified arts materials, math kits, science kits, math workbooks. Everything that it takes to run a school, paper clips, it's all in here. Um, and I I think one thing I I have noticed over my time in in Wellington is that. We've gone from stockpiling, which drove me crazy, um, to Amazon and Staples deliver the next day for the most part now. Um, and so we don't stockpile stuff. We don't have uh fifteen new staplers sitting in the basement. If we need a new stapler, we buy it, um, and it comes out of these funds. Um, and so it's just helped us really manage um what materials we have. But this is everything. I mean, there could be books in this, there's a lot of materials, you know, Aaron will be talking about in in curriculum. That will come through this, this section. It's not really broken out. The textbooks. It's not a tic- typical textbook in in that sense of the word. It's books for our our classrooms. It's books for the media center. Periodicals are things like Time for Kids, Scholastic for Kids. Um, and we kept those flat this year. The computer equipment, I kept flat. Um, and one thing that you're not gonna see in the budget that I'm gonna propose for non-lapsing fund. Um, is, is to do either a laptop lease or purchase outright. If there's money in the end of their, this year's budget, it might be something that we could do. Because our laptops are, um, I think they're on their fourth year and we're starting to buy replacements. And when we start to buy replacements. That's the time you wanna do it. So I'm working outside of the budget, uh, because it's sixty grand. And I think if we can either use non-lapsing funds or I can um use some REAP money, whatever it is. It's not built into this um portion of the budget. The computer equipment are things like a bulb. You know, it used to be a bulb for a projector broke. We don't usually have those anymore, um, because of the Promethean boards, but. That would be an example. They need a new cable, a new charger, comes out of these funds. The maintenance, piano tuning is in this for maintenance. It's a, it's a minor thing. Um, and then the building maintenance for center school. All of these things are basically contractual. You have to test the fire alarm, you have to have the pest control, you have to, you know, have your preventative maintenance, your fire extinguishers. All of those things are built into this budget. Obviously, the price of things have gone up. Um, the other thing is, we have never budgeted for, and we've just tried to scrape by and I I actually put money in this year. Um, I got away from, um, I I shouldn't say I got away from, I've denied several requests. For new lawn mowers for both buildings. I'm talking a twenty-thousand-dollar machine, lawnmower to mow the the, around the buildings. Um, that doesn't include the maintenance fees to it. Um, I didn't think it was worth it. Uh, and so we have a mowing contract in town with a a vendor. Um, he does our fields, but it doesn't include around our buildings, the spring leaf cleanup, things like that. So I've put some money into this budget to cover those additional things. I'm talking about sixty dollars of mowing. To mow around the building at center school. That's nothing for what we're getting, um, for the cleanups. And then I'm not having to maintain equipment. Um, it makes our life a lot easier. So I have built some money into that, um, building maintenance fee. The other items here that are in uh conference travel, principal supplies, um dues and fees and and memberships. The the conference travel is contractual. Um, the dues and fees and memberships for programs, some of that is contractual as well. Um, the principals have, administrators have um money in their contracts for dues and fees. And then the principal supplies are um, th- there's a gray there. Something comes up and and Lisa wants to, you know, some students do some tremendous artwork and she says, I wanna frame those and put those in the hallways. She doesn't wanna take it out of educational supply money. She, she goes out and buys five frames. Um, and uses her principal supply money so she can hang those things. Those things come up more often than than we think. Um, it could be simple rewards, it could be books for kids. She has um this pocket of money to use, I will tell you. Um, in other districts, this is not two thousand dollars. It is uh thousands and thousands more. Um, so they work well with what they have and we're creative, we, you know, getting support from the PTA. Um, shopping is as uh frugally as they can. I think Mary Kay is a, a, a queen at that. Um, we'll see Lisa, how you do. Um, but this is uh, this is the, what the principal supplies. So the total expenditure, you you can actually see there, center school's only up twenty thousand dollars. Um, and this is a big program. So when you um a- apply, something's not right there. That doesn't look right to me. Oh, yes, it is. It's the grant difference, sorry. Um, after the grant applications go through, and we put less money from S R two in this year. Because we don't have that much money left in the grants. Um, and we use twenty-five from ARPSR. And so the grand total for this program is only ten thousand dollars more than it was last year. Um, so to provide, uh, you know, in an increase in a, you know, a program is pretty important. Now, I'm gonna get to what you didn't see and what I didn't talk to you about is the staffing yet. I've built into this and it's built right here. Erin had a very specific request. Um, when she did her budget this year. Erin had a very specific request um, when she did her budget this year. Erin's the director of curriculum instruction. And she's, yeah, the in the curriculum committee can attest to this, they thought saw their first set of E L L. ELA documents yesterday. Um, it was around two hundred and fifty pages of curriculum that was written. Um, and Erin has said, I am not. Don't have the time in my schedule to go out and spend hours in classrooms rolling things out and coaching. Um, all of these things. And so the her request was to add a one point O math coach. Cause we already have a literacy one into the district budget would be halftime at center and halftime at hall. And their responsibility basically is to roll, help teachers roll out all of the changes. In curriculum and the instructional shifts and to provide support. Um. Erin's not gonna be able to do that. And so her request was to add this in. And so the point five is built into this and it's still only a ten thousand dollar increase. So. Um, I think that's uh, it's a, you know, achievable. Um, and it's something that will go across both the center program and the hall program. Erin, do you wanna add anything else about the math coach?
Um, I will, just cuz I wanna stress the importance of this position uh, in terms of rollout. Uh, we are, as you guys know, will hopefully be adopting um, K five. We already have six eight. And the implementation of a new program requires quite a bit of support. Luckily, we have Kristen for ELA. Who will be boots on the ground in the classrooms, helping and supporting teachers, um, being able to answer questions real time. Without that support. If in math with a brand-new program, it it. We're not gonna see, it means significantly not gonna see the results we would with with that support. So I just, I just really, really wanna stress the importance of that position as we move forward with a new math curriculum. Which does shift pedagogy. And I spoke about this in a different meeting as well. What I mean by that is how it is delivered. We spoke in the, um, it was the. The last board, not the curriculum meeting, um. About eh, the pedagogy and and the shift from. More teacher-delivered instruction to what we call inquiry-based learning. And this new math curriculum shifts to an inquiry-based learning approach. So the pedagogical shift for teachers is also there. So that that that. Support for teachers is so, so imperative as we shift programs. So I I just wanna really stress that.
Questions about program one? Think Herb is waving his pen.
Uh, in regard to uh, supplies and textbooks and things of that kind, uh, Phil. The textbook account is very, very low. Twenty-six hundred dollars. The media center is about thirty-five hundred. Periodicals about seventeen hundred. Uh, this means, to me, this means that we're not using textbooks anymore in the. Uh, classroom, not extensively, cuz textbooks are expensive. And under educational supplies, instructional supplies, it may be some of the teachers are getting. Uh, materials through that. I'm not sure of how this process works, how teachers. Uh, acquire instructional material from this account. Which is probably controlled by the principal. And uh, if 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 a staff member needs something, do they have to go fill out a form? Go to the principal and ask for approval for 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 these items and uh. What kind of items are they? It says instructional and it just says art work language. It could be workbooks or. No, I I really don't have a a handle on exactly what that is or how this whole process works. There's only thirty-nine thousand in there. Is that enough for ten or twelve teachers?
So this is, um. I think we tend to be pretty frugal here. Um, and we, there's other accounts that we can draw off of that. Um, do help, but it's, it is the the money for every supply. So. When we talk about the art teacher buying clay, that's in that amount of money. When we talk about PE buying new basketballs, it's in there. When we talk about buying pencils for all classrooms, it's in there. Um, one of the things that I've really um, pushed and said, I I I do not want a single list going out to parents. Um, stating, please send your child to school with this binder and this notebook and these pens and these markers. We supply everything, colored pencils, you name it. Um, all of that is in this um, in the those educational supplies. Um, I I think that. Do we have, you know, do we always, and I'm just hearing my wife talking in my ear here about books. Um, and and classroom teachers always wanting larger um, libraries in their classrooms. It's something that we are building. Uh, it's it's work that we're doing. Um, I wrote into the ARP S R grant and it's not an offset intentionally into this because it shouldn't be an offset. Um, I put seven thousand dollars each year, Aaron's here, for curriculum materials. Um, and so that you don't see that in this budget. So if she sees a need and she's the driver of that with the principal. Um, if they see a need for, you know, books in a classroom, um, they have some access to money. And so. Basically, the process is, and and they have a lot of collaboration time. So they're talking, um, teachers are talking to administrators. Um, if the teacher says, hey, I'm out of, you know, these markers. They they ask for them, they send a, it it basically, it it can just be an email with. Here's, I found them on Amazon, please get these. Um, the 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 secretary puts in a a requisition for it. The principal approves it, it comes to me, I approve it and it's ordered. Um, and they get the materials. I have not heard anyone saying I don't have what I need. We always have wish lists, right? We always have wish lists. Um, do we wish we had more money for, you know, books and um, to do more things in classroom? Sure. I think this is our balance. This is part of our balance, um, is the supplies. And Lisa, being new, I I'll I'll ask you as the principal of the building. Um. Do you see a a need at this point? Um, are you hearing a need at this point? And Aaron, you can chime in too cuz you've been around the the entire school year. Are you seeing a need where people are saying, I need more and they're not getting?
Definitely not that they're not getting. No. But that we have had requests for more, um, you know, for certain things that we may not have had, uh. It for, here's an example, um, speaking of textbooks, Phil. You know, we have some new units and I know fifth grade just called today and wanted some books specifically for the unit they were reviewing. So. You know, something like that comes up, but we've been able to provide everything. We have not had to say no.
And we've worked pretty closely within this budget. So, you know. I watch, this is one of the accounts I watch very closely. Um, because if I see, hey, you have like uh, one percent of your instructional supplies left and it's December. Why is that? Did you eh, buy something really expensive? Did, you know, was it? Paper, like why is it, why is it all your money gone? And so if I saw that, you'd see me increase this number. Um, and I think it's it's at a reasonable number right now. Um. Hopefully that answers your question. See, Brianna has her hand up too.
The, would they have, um, will the staff members have these materials at the beginning of the year? In other words, would they start off the year running with the materials or do they have to start ordering and after the? They come back in the fall and probably, you know, pick up some of these items around October or November. Do they have it right from the? Beginning?
Yes. So basically what happens is is anything that they need for the start of the school year. They let the um, secretary in the office know at the end of this school year. And they say, hey, we're gonna need these items and they place that order and the the big order comes in the summertime and they. Distributed out to classrooms. That's typically things like markers, papers, notebooks, pencils, things like that. Um, if there's anything curriculum-related that we know is gonna be needed for the first unit. Or units, it's ordered and it's comes out of those educational supplies right there. So yes, they have them, um, the items, what they need to begin the year. Brianna, I see your hand up.
Yeah, hi. Um, what is the district stance on using teachers pay teachers and donors choose?
Um, simply put, no. So I I, one of the things about teachers pay teachers is there's a lot of good stuff on there, but a lot of it's not vetted. Um, there are some very fun activities on there. There are some things that are great tied to standards. But you lose consistency um, across a grade level within a school when we start including those things. If someone brought something fantastic to Aaron and said, I found this on teacher paid teachers. And it's vetted, it's what we look at it as a school, it might be something we're gonna integrate into our curriculum. But it's not something we wanna use constantly. Um, and we actually try not to, um. Especially now, we're not approving teacher paid teachers purchases. Um, and then the, your other question was which part?
Donors choose?
Donors choose. Someone has asked me, and this is, um. Again, I I I I have this philosophy that. We should be providing what is needed for a classroom and for our students. Um, I have only had one request that I've said yes to. Um, and it was band-related at the middle school for donors choose. It was to buy a brand-new instrument because eh, new instruments are very expensive. And it turned out that someone donated one that was uh, you know, very nice instead. I I again, believe that we should be providing those things. If it was something like. You know what? We wanna put in a brand-new playground and um, that's a massive undertaking and, uh, you know. Some of these new playgrounds are three hundred thousand dollars. They're crazy. It's a lot of money. Um, that might be something that we would open a donor donors choose for. But when I think about day-to-day operations in a. In an elementary classroom or a middle school classroom, I believe it's the obligation of. The board of the town members to supply what kids need. Um, and put them on a level playing field. You know, if if Johnny doesn't have the markers that we wanted, that's not right. So we provide Johnny with the markers. We provide with those things. My philosophy, Brianna. Sorry, I don't know if that's a appropriate.
Well, I understand and um. Sometimes when you have a lot of teachers doing things on donors choose, it can make it look like the district is not providing for their staff. And that's. Not a good look and certainly not the case here. Um, I do wonder though if it's somewhat stifles the creativity of. The staff sometimes because there might be something that would really enhance a lesson or a program that they're doing in their classroom. But they wouldn't ask the townspeople to front it or use their tax money or use their um, funds that you have here to pay for it. They might do a donors choose and then um, family members could help donate. Or friends of the teacher who wanted to give them a kick could help out. Because that sort of thing, donors choose can go to anybody. It can also be totally anonymous from a stranger. They just read the. Description of what it is the classroom teacher is asking for and then decide if they wanna donate to it. So it's kind of a two-sided thing. I guess.
Yep. Um, no, I understand that.
I just didn't know where you stood.
Uh, eh, that's my stance on it. I will tell you that, um, it is my expectation a hundred percent. If someone has some creative idea. Um, we wanna know about it. Hey, I I would love to try this out in my classroom, new piece of technology, three D printer, whatever it is. Um, if someone says, can I try this out and we can find the funds for it? That's again, one of the things that we wanna do with the principal funds. Um, or i- it could be educational supplies. Those are things that we can try and do. Um, and if it, we can't do it this year, then you're gonna see it in the budget. And I'm gonna say, look, we wanna put five thousand dollars in for this next year because. Um, this is something we wanna uh, build into our our programs.
Okay. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Phil?
Yep.
Uh, just a quick question on on the purchase services. The subscription, such thickens math, science and the reading. Uh, seems to be fluctuating up and down. It was seven thousand a couple years ago. And it last year was eleven thousand, now it's about four thousand seven hundred. But. These subscriptions, are they, um. Booklets, uh, workbooks, um.
No.
Or magazines or things of that nature?
No, these are electronic subscriptions, the ones that are in here. Um, are uh, the I-readies are testing, that's moved into district now. What you see, what's left. Is uh, there's a reading A to Z, learning A to Z is in here. Um, Lexia is is part of this. I also think there's um, some electronic. This might be where our electronic plan books fall. We have some money in for electronic plan books, things like that.
They're on the computers then.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay, but why are we dropping to forty-seven hundred?
Because we had, um, for several of these, we had multi-year contracts uh, that we got last year. Things like Lexia that costs a a lot of money, fifteen to seventeen thousand dollars. Um, we have a multi-year contract that we use grant funding for. Um, and in a typical budget year, I would only budget for one year. When we had the grant funding and we knew it was something that we're, we've always used Lexia. It's a, one of the great, best resources that we have. As far as early reading, um, but it's. Boy, they have a a hot market because they're kind of one of a kind. Um, and it's a really good program and it's something that we want our students to have access to, um, but it's expensive. And so we we did a multi-year contract last year. Um, and so you don't see it in here cuz it continues through.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, and?
Um, this is a question for Erin. Erin, the math, um, support person, the consultant. Would that person also be helpful for you in terms of curriculum writing, kind of in the way that? Um, Kristen is really helpful for the ELA.
Sorry, I had to run to the the other room really quickly, but I heard, I heard my name, so I ran back. Um. I heard you. Can you just repeat that again?
I'd be happy to. Um, the the math person, the proposed math person, um, consultant. Would that person be helpful for you in curriculum writing? Much the same way that Kristen is helpful with the ELA curriculum writing?
So they would play a role, not as great because we don't have to blend two programs. Um, the program is pretty well, it it's very median of itself. Um, the major curricular resource, which is illustrative math. So it wouldn't be, I I mean, they would definitely play a role, but it would not be as heavy. It would, it's really more for the the teacher support, getting. Eh, cuz it's really a big pedagogue. It's really a shift in how to teach. Um, in fact, actually. Lisa, I I don't mean to put you on the spot, but Lisa actually used the program as an elementary teacher too, so she can kinda speak to what it entails to. Um, but that the the need and the support for the teachers is great. So no, they'd be more support for teachers than. The curriculum aspect, which Chris has been, Kristen's been doing more of.
And Kristen has a lot of history, you know, that has been valuable. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for program one for center school? Lisa, did you wanna add any, any final comments about, no pressure?
I have another question I'd like to ask.
Go ahead, Erin.
In regard to the uh, center school uh, program. I mean, we seem to be doing a very good job in in all the areas and uh. With a, with a little luck, maybe our, you know, our test scores will go up as a result. But have we expanded? Any of our, um. Course offerings? At all in in center school or hall school for that matter? There's so many courses out there. That. Are. Courses that would be very creative and uh, offer. Students an an expansion of of what they're getting now. And I was wondering if anything was. Included in in uh, budget for things of of that kind. Uh, whether it's creative writing or in literature or. All of the areas that that uh. If we had. Unlimited amount of money we could offer.
We not at the elementary level. What I'll tell you is that my my thoughts are on on two things. One is, is we do have a grant for club money. Um, and we can, we can run clubs. We were gonna start clubs up at the elementary school and then COVID hit and we kinda said, we wanna wait till that's over. Um. So it's something in the future that would provide uh, an enriching after-school. So it's something in the future that would provide an enriching after school experience for students. That want to take part in that. The other thing and Erin, you can speak to this is. It, it's kind of two parts too, is that as we have new curriculum that we're, we're writing. And, and approving, we're looking into two parts. One is portrait of the graduate. And some of those soft skills that students need and that's being built into the curriculum and will be built into the curriculum. That's one part, but the other part Herb, and I'm thinking about collaboration and, and in particular in communication. But the other part of that is. Aaron's, you know, working on project based learning. And, and that is part of what we're building into our curriculum. And Erin, if you want to speak to that as far as something that, it's not necessarily a course offering Herb, that would be more of the middle school. But the more engaging kind of hands-on lessons might be part of the EBL work there.
Yeah, I would even venture farther and, and say, you do, you, again. Shifting to an inquiry based learning approach, like even the math curriculum is going to bring more hands on. Kind of what you're getting to and in a higher engagement level. But project based learning brings a lot of student interest, which, which you're getting at with the clubs. So for instance, you know, they, they pick, there's projects connected to professions, connected to hobbies. And so anything that they might be interested in, you can find a project that, that would bring that interest level as well as teaching content. So we're really trying, at the elementary level. We infuse a lot of that in the core curriculum is what, you know, kind of what, where Phil's going with that. But I will say, I know that we also are looking at the club, Phil, I know this got brought up. In one of our meetings when we talked about the half days possibly, you know, as we think towards next year. With possible the after schools and in different, in different options in terms of, of that. But in terms of the core curriculum, if we work, we work the student interest in there.
Okay, thank you.
Donna has her hand up, Phil.
Yeah, Phil.
Sorry, I was having trouble unmuting. One of the things I'm wondering if you put any money in the budget for is when we were having the conversation. About those half days and Erin just touched on this slightly. But. The, the cost to our families for half day childcare could end up being pretty significant. And so when you're putting this budget together, is there anywhere in the budget? That you put funds for providing. That. Extra half day. Whether it's. You know, making arrangements with Star Hill and, and shipping the kids there so that they can. Run around and, and. Do some. Athletic kind of things in the winter, you know, in the bubble or. Having, you know, extra staff come in. From. Local groups, it just some, something to kind of ease the burden on parents.
So this is, there's not specific funds in for that, but there are, there's money in for clubs, which would. Could be helped be addressed, use those funds on those days. And, and that's both schools. That was number one and number two was. We have budgeted for the folks that. Are working, and I'm really thinking about paraprofessionals at this moment. To work a full day that day. And they might not be assigned to professional development every day. And so we are already in conversation just to try and figure out what can we do? With our paraprofessionals, because if we have an early release and, and early release at Hall, I think it's twelve o'clock. Right around that time. And the, the contractual day, really their day would go to like two thirty. And so we would be able to use those folks. For coverage of things and you know, Erin and I have had conversations about this in a, in a prior district. Where they brought in like. You know, someone to do a show or, you know. Owls of prey or birds of prey and, and you know, you're just watching that. So those are things that. You know, we're, we're looking at, I'm also meeting with a, a local daycare facility just to see if they have any interest. But basically I'd be looking to bring people in. And not send students out. Because we, I, I think we want to own the liability when they're here, otherwise we would need our staff there. But there's no. There's no money to send students out at this point in time and. I think we might have a, someone on this board that knows a lot about after school grants, Michelle. And so she may be someone that, you know, we, we talk to as well, just to see what's out there as we get closer to. What are we going to do on those half days? What's, what is the interest? I'd be, I, I would want to do another survey now just to find out how many people would participate in something. Simply because of where you put a lot of those days. On Fridays, I don't know if people are going to go away, if they're gonna. Want to have those extended weekends or not, but it's definitely something that we're going to plan for, but there's no specific dollars in this budget for that.
Have you, as a piggyback question, have you reached out to the PTA at all to see if. They might be interested in funding, like you said, an outside group coming in. For some sort of show or experience.
Not yet, but they have reached out to me and offered to, if they can help in some way. I think we need to. Try and solidify and get through some of this budget season to solidify. Interest first and then, you know. If, if I can tap into several groups. And keep our costs low for our families, it's something obviously that, that we, you know, we said we would do. And so it's, it's, it's on our radar. And it's just a matter of what's the interest level going to be? How many kids can we really keep? And what does it look like?
Thank you.
Yep. Any other center school questions? Lisa, I cut you off before, did you want to say something?
Oh, that's okay. No, I just wanted to. Just reiterate the importance of the coaching for I am. I just came from a school that rolled it out this past fall and it was really essential for us to have access. To our full-time. Math coach because we were constantly asking questions, you know, as a new rollout. With so many other things on, on teachers plates, it, it was just really. It was helpful and just so important for us to be able to ask those questions and. Have her come in and model lessons if need be and. You know, understanding all of the materials and, and the very extensive lesson plans and the amount of prep work that goes into. You know, getting the lessons ready for the students. So I just wanted to, you know, just kind of reiterate what, what Erin had said on, on that basis.
Thank you. I will tell you that when we have these conversations too, and my admin team knows this about me, I'm pretty open. So just because, you know, Marsh is in charge of special education, doesn't mean everybody gets to weigh, everyone gets to weigh in on that. We share. Our thoughts and matter of the program, the matter of the building. And, and it's a pretty collaborative approach, so. That's, that's how we develop these, this budget. Program two. All right, here we go. Hall School. So this should be faster because you know the layout now, you can see. This is a change here, this two point O, the administrator, that's Erin, it just happens to be where I put her. We just put the entire grant offset in here. You can see the number of teachers again, the, the cost of the title, this is the offset that we use. Again, the secretarial piece is a, a full position, it's just portions or elsewhere. The secretary in this specific building does, is in charge of maintenance as well. And so that is the person that takes care of all the purchase orders and requisitions for maintenance. This one does have. There's a mistake right there. Just found that paraprofessionals is actually two. I am going to correct that. Is, we had it in there for utility, Donna thought it was. And the two point O is the person we have in the library media center, she's a paraprofessional. And then we also have a support interventionist. That is also a paraprofessional. And so there's two positions there. The salary however is correct, it's not meant for four people. And again, you can see the, the increases or decreases in, in, you know, based upon who we hired and contractually. But there's the increase that's again, it's contractual, you can't adjust that. So that is, it's, it looks like it's up a ton, but remember Erin's salaries in there and the entire grant offset is, is below. Purchase services again, Mary Kay went through this and, and with a fine tooth comb and said. We don't need all these services that we have, she's adjusted that down to twelve hundred. We have a, the climbing wall inspection at Hall, which is the full belay wall, there's a system that gets inspected each year. We have that, our school, again, you need. The copiers, the telephone, same internet service, postage meter, all the same thing for disposal. The, the music repairs and piano tuning in this one. We contract with the company for, for repairs for our instruments. It's not cheap, you know, and when you're going to repair an instrument, we have several instruments that are school owned. And so we want to take good care of them. So if something needs to be fixed, we, we get it fixed. You look again at the educational supplies, same type of concept here. All of the things that are built into this, it includes now the guidance, the, you know, the media center. Health and safety, school wide enrichment includes all of the content areas. For the materials that they need. The library books and periodicals are lumped together in this one. And the majority of this is library books, there she has some subscriptions, it's come down a little bit. But Amy has, Amy Reddings, our librarian, our library media specialist, and she has said, this is what I need. So we didn't say, you don't need as much, she said, this is what I need. For her subscriptions and so that's the cost. You can see the computer equipment there, this was where we used, this is a good example of the adjusted. Where you transferred money to buy the Promethean boards. All right, so you didn't budget a hundred and twenty thousand dollars here in this section. That's what, just what was the adjusted. Sixty eight hundred is what we'll have in the, the fix it budget, that's for, for hall school. And they have more in there is basically because they have the more, more Chromebooks in that, that building. Building maintenance, again, it went up a little bit. This was another adjusted where we did some, the, the fence, we did the library furniture, we had to pay for a locksmith, we had to pay for some security stuff. And we had to pay for the septic tank. So this again was, was not something you budgeted for, it's just something where we had some adjustments. Okay? You have sports and extra activities in this budget. It's pretty much flat, we left it alone. It's, it's, this has been a weird program. Section simply because of COVID. Sometimes we're, in a typical year, we're going to use all of these funds. Sometimes with COVID, if a game is canceled and we don't have to pay for officials or we don't have to pay for transportation. Things that impacts the overall budget. The stipend doesn't change because we're still paying our coaches. But the officials have and, and so we've left it flat. Again, conference travels in there, the principal supplies is in there, she's, she's got a little bit more money in this one. Typically that middle school one is a little bit higher and the reason why is. They've done some things early on with their promotion ceremony, graduating from eighth grades, sorry. Is a little bit bigger deal than transitioning schools. And so they have some, some funds in there that they've used and things for. Using fees, again, you've got some contractual things in there. The computer music science, that's the memberships for professional organizations as well, so. National Council Science Teachers, things like that. So you can see the total expenditures is up. And after all of the grant offsets, title one is the position, title four is the clubs. Reap is the electronics and ARP S R is Aaron. And so you see the budget total on the bottom here. And again, this has the point five coach built in up here into the salaries. So the total increase for this one here, you can see the, the change from one point nine million to one point nine eight there. Questions about hall school or Mary Kay, did you want to add anything? To. About your program?
No, I mean, you've, you've been incredibly thorough. I do think that, you know, the, the, the math coach will be helpful. To make sure that there's continuity to our school. I also think that, you know, obviously. We're going to look for different. Shifting in the ways, the way pedagogy is carried out, the way the teaching happens, so that's all. Over time and I'm looking forward to. Seeing some of these changes happen and seeing the, us reap those benefits. You've been very thorough though, so I don't really have a whole lot to add.
Thanks, I just wanted to ask you a question too. Because I think it's, it's come up a couple of years in a row, have you had teachers? Feeling like they're not getting the, the supplies that they've needed?
No, I mean, teachers will start the year, like you said, with the basic supplies they need to keep their classroom, you know, running and, and. You know, making sure that students have everything they need and as you mentioned, something may come up. Where they may need something that's more spur of the moment or they, they may not have accounted for how quickly something might be used. Because most of these things are consumable. And. They simply just request and we always have funds for them. There have been times and you mentioned this, Phil, I, I am. Somewhat frugal, so if I think that I can find something that's. Costs less money, I will often look for a way to reduce those costs or maybe even consolidate. If one program's looking for something and I know that I can find something in batches of a hundred, I'll do it that way and share it among teachers. So no, we don't have anybody who's usually looking for anything and if they do, we just will have the opportunity to order for them.
Thank you. Questions for the hall school program? Pretty consistent, what you, once you see center school, all schools. Pretty consistent behind it.
On the. On the sports and extra activities. The, you said that. The figures are. Were, were flat and I, I noticed that too, but. You think that next year? That we're using the funds in this area? Like in stipends for extra activity clubs, you gave us a list of the clubs and stuff like that. I remember, I don't have a copy at a handy, but.
If I, it could, Phil, if I can answer. I mean. We do have, our sports is running right now and it's very, very limited and clubs. We are, we are going to be offering some, but it all depends on what the landscape is with COVID and with. How much extra teachers are working, for example. We do have clubs available, but they're after school and, and they're. The stipend, you know. A teacher may opt to do. Work within the school day as opposed to work after the school day, so. We were not a hundred percent sure what that forecast is going to look like. I would anticipate if COVID is alleviated or if at least we see some relief. We'll be running clubs for the full year instead of, we're just only run, running them for half a year this year, so. I, I, it might increase as we go forward, but we don't know that until we get there.
Okay. Phil, a lot of people in town keep asking me a question regarding the. Per pupil expenditure. And. I, I haven't arranged, you know, that I give them, but I, I don't have anything specific. Do you have any? Information on that or, or can you get that maybe by, by the next meeting?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep, no problem. Part of the per pupil expenditure cost. Is to run two buildings. Unfortunately. And, and I've been very open with my administrative team and I've said this in public. If you. If you go to one building. I don't have a full-time job. I really believe that if, if we get everything going the way we want to go. With all our professional development and curriculum. And changes, I think this job could easily, not right now, I'll say that much, not right now. But long-term, I think the superintendent's job could be a, a part-time job. And I think you could look to scale down the admin team. There's several ways to do that, but you can't do it when you have two buildings. And just like, I don't think we could afford Erin. In our typical budget without the grants and so it's a kind of a pro of COVID, which trying to find. The, the good in it, because we've got some, some money that's allowed us to do some things we've really been wanting to do for a while. But I can get that for you here. But I can get that for you here. Any other questions about program two?
Tracy's hand is up.
I just had a question. I got a little distracted when you were talking about the math coach, but we still have a math intervention position in district? Or did that go away when we needed a teacher?
It's only at center.
It's only at center, so we still do have that position somewhere. Okay.
It's at center, correct.
All right, thank you.
Yep, and her caseload is very large.
Imagine.
Any other questions about Hall? All right. Program three, special ed. So same process here. This is, you know, program threes is, it does contain a large portion of our increase. There's additional teaching support in here. There's a third outplacement, and I'll go through those, those items. So we, we have a point four added teacher from this year at Hall School. And Marcia has made the request to make that point four into 1.0 because of the need. And so there's an increase here of point six in the staffing for special education. When we talk about that as as a budgetary item, it's, it's less of a choice, if you know what I mean, because it's, you have to meet a child's IEP, which is their individualized education plan. And so as Marcia has said, this is something we need to do at the middle school. It's where we have the need right now. She's, that's built into this budget. When you see all of these things together, you have to add them together, and we have 11 basically certified staff that are in WEA, the teachers' union, that are in the special ed program. And that includes school psych, it includes special education teachers, the preschool teacher, all of those make up the 11. This is where I would say Marcia's been quite a rock star. And when Marcia started one of our first long meetings we had, we sat down, we talked about paraprofessionals. And the number of paraprofessionals that we had, and the number of students that we had identified. I think the number of students that we have identified is accurate. It's, it's, we're, you know, we're not seeing an over identification. Marcia has gone through and looked at service hours, and she makes a request each year based upon those service hours and the number of paraprofessionals that she thinks she's going to need, based upon the information she has today. Remember, this is a volatile program. Somebody moves tomorrow into district, and that person has a one-on-one paraprofessional in their plan, and they move into Wellington, we are obligated to meet that one-to-one paraprofessional. So not a lot of choice in that. This down here is how you get to 21. So we have 21 paraprofessionals that she's asking for next year, 19.82 plus the 1.18. Whereas this year, she had budgeted for 25. So she's not keeping people where she doesn't need people. And that's kind of the message that I want to send, is where she's done a really good job of doing that. And we'll talk about the dollars and the savings of the other strategy we've had down below. You can see again the salaries that are in there. The, the OTPT salaries are in there, occupational therapy and physical therapy, secretarial, the paraprofessional. These are Wellington paraprofessionals, meaning they're in our, our Wellington contract. You can see that that number came down this year, or is budgeted because we're asking for less. Okay? She's got a certified classified substitute section that we left flat. And then here's the purchase service section for special education. So IEP direct is going to be done by the state next year. It's supposed to be free, but there's some things where if we want our, the system to talk to Power School, we left some funds in there, because until we use it, quite frankly, we're not sure how, what our needs are going to be. And so we left some money in there. That $3,600 in our next budget cycle could be higher, it could be lower, or it could be zero. We'll see how it goes. But we wanted to leave some funds in there. You have autological repairs, maintenance in there. This is the biggie, the tuition outplacement. You can see where it went from 302 to 467. There's a $165,000 increase. And remember, 90,000 is about a percent of your budget. So that's a big chunk of money as an increase. You don't have a choice. It's made through, that decision is made through a parent, playing a placement team meeting, and it's legally binding. We have to, we have to fulfill that. Outside counseling, she kept that flat, and this is where we, Marcia has gone through and said, you know what, we believe we're spending too much money out, getting paraprofessionals from the outside. And so bringing somebody, somebody in from East Con or Crack, and she's transitioned paras over the last years. I want to say that 182 in that first year, the year before that might have been 280. I mean, it was, we've come down significantly. And she's making work very, very well. So that's a big savings. And having four paraprofessionals less, we're looking at the balance of adding the, the rest of the point six teacher is kind of a wash. The behavioral consultant, again, is something that is in a student's IEP. It's mandated, so we have the 35,000 there. We have the after-school program built in at 7,000. There's a grant offset for that. We have the summer school program, which Marcia's been great at operating within budget. So there's 21,000 there, it's flat. The evaluations is flat. Those are the special evaluations they have to do in special education. There's a lot of them. So there's, there's evaluations. And here's the transportation line. This has gone up again because of the outplacement. So it's, it's up another $63,000 from where it was. And you're provided, the district is required to provide transportation, and it's specialized transportation. And so this is an area where Marcia will reach out to neighboring districts and say, hey, you have any students going to X facility? We have a student that will be traveling there. Can we share transportation? She looks to do that wherever she can and saves money. Sometimes it works, sometimes it's, there's, it's out there, and sometimes it's not. You just have to pay the cost. But we're anticipating that increase there. The other thing is we've added in Horizons, and that's a summer program that's built into an IEP. I think it's a summer program. Marcia, do you want to chime in on that?
Sorry, yep, I couldn't unmute. Actually, that's not the summer program. That is working with Horizons, providing consultation services to the teams who work with students who are, really have multiple needs to make sure that we are doing proper planning and support for those students as they progress throughout their years at Hall.
Thank you. So again, you can see the increase is really the outplacement. They work within supplies, and let me just say, this is, it says supplies to support a special education. It doesn't mean that special students with special education needs don't get the same supplies as other kids. That's not the case. This is just additional for if they have specific supplies they need for their program, that they have the money there. There are others, again, conferences, travel, what's, what's required under contract, using fees, what's carried under contract. They have their own copier maintenance, because obviously when they're printing, they're, you know, they have their own documents that are private. They, they have to have the maintenance on it, and they have the telephone cost. So here's where the magic occurs, and thank goodness for grants, because total expenditure is just $2.7 million for our special education program. The excess cost is, brings, we are counting on 151,000. Again, that excess cost is when a student costs more than four and a half times our per pupil expenditure, we get some money back. We're expecting back 151,000 next year. The IDEA certified grant that's towards certified staff, 53,000. The preschool certified, you're taking off 5,100. The IDEA classified, which is paraprofessional, we're taking off 32,000. We have a grant offset for IDEA purchase service. That's the $3,600, which is the, what we'll call the IEP direct. It's whatever the state. What's the new acronym the state has for the new program, Marcia?
CTSEDS.
CTSEDS, so that'll be the new hosting system for all the special education data. We have, Marcia wrote a grant for a special education S R two grant, and she was able to get a $7,000 offset to, for the wealth program. We, this is the Medicaid money because of the outplacement, and we wanted to try and bring this budget down some. You know, the non-lapsing fund is, is a good backup, but it doesn't need to be maxed out. If we know we're going to have some increased cost, and it's, it's specific to special ed, I wouldn't want to use it all. But between the Medicaid and the non-lapsing fund, we put a $79,000 offset on. And so the Medicaid would be fully expended. There'd be no money left in the Medicaid account. It's a good use for it. And then the non-lapsing fund, we would have to go through the process of getting $50,000 to offset the budget. That would be requests. And so that would, it's, it's built into the budget. Marcia, do you want to speak to, please, the, the point four, and this is kind of in the write-up here, the point four to the 1.0, please?
Sure. So I'm sure you've heard Phil make comments in several different meetings about how we really need to move our students. We need to move them, and we need to see them making more success, achieving higher. We're finding that, you know, the students really need to have that, those wraparound services in special education. The way the model is set up right now, because special ed teachers need to cross grades, they're seeing their students, you know, in their academic support class one time a day, they're able to provide minimal push-in services to classing, classes and, and minimal co-teaching. We really need to be providing students with the special education services that are wraparound, where that special ed teacher can be working with each grade level team. They can attend those team meetings. They can work with those regular ed teachers to talk about providing accommodations and modifications. They can provide more of those push-in services and more of the co-teaching models, so we're not pulling these kids out of their classes. We need to be ensuring that we are providing least restrictive environment. And I know that's going to be something that our state is going to be really looking at as they move to this new CTSEDS program. It's going to change the whole look of the IEP. It's going to give the state access to the IEPs. And they're really going to be looking at to making sure each district is providing least restrictive environment. So by providing or adding on to an additional special ed teacher or that point six, it's going to be able to allow us to provide more of those wraparound services to support students. And we've, we've seen some success this year with the point four. We're seeing student growth. We're seeing that special ed teacher really be able to support those kids socially and emotionally also, which is very important right now. So it's a little highlight of why I feel it's very important for us to really consider this position.
Questions about the special education program?
Go ahead, Laura.
Yeah, I just had a question about the wealth after-school program. That the adjusted was 17,000, but then it went to seven and is proposed for seven, and that's offset by the grant. So I'm just, I'm just wondering about that change.
Well, we're really not taking, we're not decreasing any of the funding for that. We're just, because we have that new grant, we're able to offset some of those costs for the program.
So we're budgeting 7,000 and then getting another 7,000? Is that?
No, it's an offset. That 7,000 is an offset. Are you questioning why it went from 17,82 years ago to 7,000?
Yeah, that's my question. Oh, okay. You know, we were really able to provide the services that we need with that funding. We're finding that we just, you know, that funding has been appropriate. Last year was a little bit different with COVID, you know, so, but we're really able to continue to provide that same amount of service with that funding.
Yeah, Laura, one of the things I always ask is, if, if I see money left over in the end-of-year budget, the end of the year comes around and I say, Marcia, why do you have $10,000 still in wealth? Something's not right. And so, again, Marcia coming in new and evaluating a budget, I guarantee this is around the time she started, and she said, look, you know, there's money left in wealth each year. We've run the program. It's, it's, we're, it's meeting our needs, but there's money left in it. We shouldn't budget for that. And so if we find that 7,000 one year, you know, we run wealth this year, and, you know, and it doesn't, it's not enough money, we will increase the budget. But what we've seen in the history of this is that $7,000 is what it takes to run the program. And what it takes to run the program, really what we're talking about, Marcia, correct me if I'm wrong, is the cost of the teacher or teachers, maybe a paraprofessional. There's an hourly rate, basically. And then the second thing is transportation. And so sometimes we can build transportation into joint with the clubs. So when we talk about being thrifty in Wellington, they're going to try and run the wealth program on the same day as a club day. It's not both days, so students can still access clubs, because there's, would be a second club day. But it saves us some funding and where we're not adding another day of transportation, because transportation is. Does that answer your question?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Donna has her hand up. Hang on.
Marcia, approximately how many students, I mean, we know that there's three outplaced, but how many students participate, pay and need this kind of support?
Sure. We have approximately 85 students currently to date. Now, keep in mind, that is covering students in district. That is covering outplay students, and that is covering students who are attending magnet school, who we over, who live in Wellington, and we oversee their special education program.
Does that include pre-K?
Includes pre-K, yes.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions about program three?
Yes, Phil, I have one on the, on the purchase, purchase services. The behavior, behavior consultants. Now, we have psychologists on hand, we have guidance counselors, we have all kinds of programs that we have set up in our system, plus the new health service program. So is this behavioral consultant specifically for special education students, or is it for every student, five or six?
Marcia, before you answer, so I will tell you one thing that will be handy for all of you. And, and if you're, you're not an expert in special education, which most people are not, that's okay. In Marcia's program explanation here, in her instructional summary, one of the things that she's done is she's done definitions for people. What is the school psych? What is the speech and language path? What is an OTPT? School counseling, social worker, contracted services, and it talks about behavioral consultant there. So it's a backup for you as well. Marcia, do you want to speak to those services, please?
Sure, yes. So that is for BCBA, Behavior, Board Certified Behavior Analysis. And that is, we consult through East Con for those services. Those services are required when you have a student who is really struggling with behavioral management. That is services that are beyond school psychologist and counselor. Those students receive counseling, but they also really are required to have that behavior analysis on the team, to consult with the team, to help write a functional behavioral assessment, and to also develop a behavior intervention plan.
Now, is that behavioral consultant onsite all of the time? In other words, if you have a student with a problem, is someone there to assist them and to care for them?
So the, the BCBA's are consultants to the team. They don't work directly with the student. They are there to help review data, review, develop a functional behavioral assessment, and develop a behavior intervention plan. They don't directly support students during any type of crisis. They are there as consultants to the team. So they are in district one day a week. We have two BCBA consultants. They work together. Um, so they are in district one day a week. We have two B B C B A consultants. Um, they work together. They spend part of their day at Hall and part of their day at Center.
One thing I'm gonna add to that is is in in Marcia, you can feel free to add, tell me if you think I'm wrong, but I think one thing when we, uh, if you were ever um a district that's been sued uh, and they start looking at, did you provide all of the supports necessary to uh make sure that student can stay in district and receive the appropriate education? If it's behavior related, one thing they're gonna look at is, did you provide uh consultant, did you have a consultant from a, as a B C B A? And if you didn't, you're probably gonna lose your case.
Oh, absolutely.
And so if we have a student in district um where there's a behavior need um, and there's a potential, you know, maybe things are not going well and there's a potential that this student might be uh outplaced. Um, we, this is something that is in our repertoire, that Marcia is adding in and making sure that you know, we doing everything and we can, everything we can to keep that student in district and safe, obviously, uh, and learning. Um, and the B C E B As help us do that. And sometimes, let's be, let's be honest here, sometimes it works and sometimes it doesn't. But it's a step that we've taken to ensure that we've to that we're gonna provide that student with the the best education we can. Um, and it prevents us um from being sued.
Yeah, I I a hundred percent support what you're saying, Phil. This is um, you know, when I attend a lot of the conferences, law conferences, um, in regards to special education, this is one area that um, the attorneys stress very strongly. Um, when you have the students, when you have students with emotional dysregulation who need to have those behavior plans, you you must have the B C B As onboard consulting with the team. So that is very uh important to those those students. Um, and this is, this is an area that I've looked at significantly because, you know, there may come a time when we are gonna need to look to have somebody on staff. We're able to provide this service through East Con. Um, but this is an area that, you know, we're gonna see a continued need for and an area that I'm, I really hone in on when we're doing the budget.
Donna has her hand up.
Well, it does provide us with a pretty good service and
Yes, I will tell you that ever since I've been in Wellington, East Con has has had tremendous B C B As, tremendous.
Tremendous.
Donna has her hand up.
Yeah, um, so so Marcia, when I'm looking at, you said we've got eighty-five students and that includes um, Wellington students, Wellington students that are outplaced and then um Wellington students that are magnet schools. But we've got roughly twenty per, more than twenty percent or twenty percent of our students needing special education. Our s- our steps being taken with our pre-K kindergarteners to get them on the right steps so that they either don't need special education or they need um less um intervention. I mean, there obviously the 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 students that are being outplaced, um we're not gonna have so much of an impact or the kids at the magnet schools. But I'm I'm just concerned that that's a really high percentage um of kids that that need the extra help and we want them to get it, but if there's things that can be done earlier so that they need less later.
We are very slightly over the state average in regards to percentage of special education students, so we are, we're very close to the state average. Um, certainly, I mean, our prequel preschool program is um, you know, intervention strategy for kids. We have kids that are coming in through birth to three services, um, you know, who we're providing those services for. And kids in uh kindergarten, you know, they're going through the same intervention process that our kids would be going through in first through eighth grade. So we're providing those, you know, intervention skills um, it's uh to those students. So, um, you know, I, a big piece of what Erin is doing is really looking at our curriculum. Um, and I know that uh Lisa talked about SRBI and really um, really working on that and improving that. Uh, that's a, that's a huge, huge area, um, that's so important for these students for that, those pre-intervention skills. Um, so the kindergarten, like I said, kindergarten students, they go through those intervention uh process just as all of our other students.
I had the same question um a couple of years ago, and that was one of the reasons why we had an independent evaluation and were we over identifying? Um, and the answer that came out was no, we're not over identifying. Um, the other part of the question was when students are identified with special education needs, um, are there students who we should be should should be moving out um that don't qualify anymore? And and really what the report showed was that it was appropriate. The kids that were moving out, um, they should have been moving out and that there was appropriate services in place. The other piece that um happened a few years back that was really interesting in education and Marcia just said SRBI, and I know how much you like acronyms, Donna, um, that's science, uh scientifically researched based interventions. And um districts started a few years back being required to provide intervention services um and and formalizing those processes. And they were talking about the different tiers. And what they found out as a, I think, a byproduct and and the state, states didn't quite expect this was um, when that occurred, um, the number of students that were identified with special education needs went up. And that's not just Wellington, that's that's across the board. Pick a town, um, if you could look at that timeframe, um, their numbers went up. And so we've been around that twenty percent. Um, I think we've ranged from everything from seventeen, eighteen up to twenty-four, something like that. Um, and and again, it just depends on, I always ask Marcia, are there kids that you know, we should be moving out? And those are things that we want to i- identify and make sure we're, we are moving kids out. Because as Marcia said, the state is watching it, but so are we. More importantly, we are. The student shouldn't be identified anymore and they can be independent on their own. We want to, you know, exit them. It's a celebration, so.
We are finding that we are seeing increased um referrals from birth to three coming into our preschool program.
That that doesn't surprise me. I'm kind of wondering, um, well, the birth to three because of all that's been going on. Um, everybody's being hit hard, even the kids that wouldn't necessarily have some challenges and struggles. Um, but I'm also wondering if there's something that happens, needs to happen with offering services to train expected parents of things that they can do. You know, whether it's reading to their kid or or what whatever it might be, um, to kind of head headed off before it happens. And I don't know if that would fall under something that you deal with or if that would be something outside of
Yeah, it it wouldn't necessarily be for us, Wellington Public Schools, because we start servicing students, you know, uh, three years and older. However, the state did um put something in place to try to kind of address those concerns. Um, it is an app, it's called a Sparkler app, um, but they've encouraged all districts to put this app out to uh families, which we have done. It's on our website and it is an app that families can access um, to be able to kind of monitor where their kids' development is. Um, so that is something that the state put together and they're, you know, encouraging that to go out to these young families to be able to monitor where their kids are at. And then, you know, they could talk to their pediatrician and do a referral to birth to three if they're having some concerns. Or if they're three and over, they they can make a referral to district.
As a follow-up, um, and maybe this this is probably outside of the budget discussion, but so that seems like something since if we have a kid in kindergarten, they may be the oldest of the siblings or if they're in the birth to three, that the parents may be planning on having more children. Um, I don't know if that's something the digital backpack or if there's ways that we can communicate, included in some of our communications so that families are aware of that resource because they may not be looking at Marcia's website.
That is something that, uh, you know, daycare providers have been given that um through the state also, so it is, you know, hopeful. We hope that daycare providers are also sharing that information. And I would hope, um, I don't know, and this is something that I I'm actually curious, uh, and I'm gonna look into this to see if pediatricians are also sharing that with their families.
Any other questions for program three, special ed?
Phil, on the um, the I E P S E D that we um entered into, I think at our last meeting, the uh data system that the state has set up for special education, uh, I think did you, you mentioned, I think, tonight that we have some money in the budget for that. That's a free program, but there were some expenses associated with it. Is that on purchase services somewhere?
Yeah, it's that, it's that thirty-six hundred dollars right there, Herb. Um, and we have it in there because and and what's the unknown right now? And Marcia, feel free to add to this. The unknown is is so Power School is our student operating system. It's where all of our student data is, is and apparently um, there's an à la carte that you can have the new state system talk to your Power School system and back and forth. And you pay for it one way and then you pay for it the other way, in and out. Um, we're not quite sure it's, because there's still more information coming out about this. I think everyone was kind of shocked, like I told you when that came out and it was suddenly there's more, not as quite as free as it appeared. So we have some money in there, but Marcia has also offset that with this right here, um, with the I D E A purchase services. So, um, it's a grant offset.
Do that program and it's just, they're just beginning, it probably expand too, so that uh uh, that that'll be enough money to to take care of that, you think?
It it's actually more than enough money, um, what the state is quoting us for the service, the at, the extra services, you know, that they're talking about, um, which I don't know if we're gonna need because we are a small district. But I also wanted to keep some money in there because um, many districts are considering keeping a portion of frontline, although we can't use the I E Ps in frontline. We can't, you know, develop new I E Ps in frontline next year. We still may need to access some of the data that's in there. Um, so I i- am considering being able to keep a portion of frontline, which that hasn't been quoted out to districts, what that's gonna cost yet. Um, because I want to make sure that if there's information that we need to access, we can still do that next year.
In our dream world, the state will pick that up. Because uh ninety-nine percent of people use I E P direct or frontline, Marcia, I mean.
Yeah, ninety-nine point nine percent.
It's a huge number. And so um, we're, I know the state's considering that.
Now, we're gonna have to have professional development for some of our staff to operate. This is military complex.
Well, the whole I E P is going to change for next year, starting July one. So they'll be training over the summer. Um, there'll be three of us in district going to training, myself and two other staff members who I'll be identifying. And then we will become the trainer of trainers and we will train the rest of our special education staff uh the beginning of school next year.
So we don't need any additional money for that then?
No, in fact, the state may give us a stipend to train the trainers.
Can I move on to program four? You're muted.
Sorry, can we just take a five-minute break? Because it feels like you've been staring at a lot of numbers for a long time, I think, maybe.
That might be.
I have that it's eight oh eight. Um, I move that we uh adjourn for five minutes until uh fifteen after eight. Um, I'll need a second.
Second.
I was just saying, do you need a second? And I was muted.
Which is why we all need a break. We're getting a little blurry. Okay, all those in favor of adjourning for five minutes signify by saying aye. Opposed? Abstained? Okay, passage unanimously. Okay, we will adjourn for five minutes and start again at eight fifteen.
Thank you.
Be reconvened meeting. I move that we reconvene the meeting at eight fifteen.
Do you need a second?
I, you know, I don't know about that and I don't have my sheet right in front of me.
So I will second that.
On on an overabundance caution, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of reconvening signify by saying aye. Okay, was unanimous. So let's move on to program four.
All right. These should be quicker. Um, for, you know what, before we start, uh, do you, can I uh send my admin team away if they so choose? Transportation is is four and five and cell services and I gonna say I really don't need them for those to answer questions unless you have other questions for them. For programs one, two, or three, I'd like to say, have a good night to those folks if they so choose.
That's perfectly fine, yeah.
Sounds fine.
Okay, so admin team, if you want to go, thank you so much. I'll see you tomorrow. What's that, Herb?
I want to thank all the uh
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, I will make sure they know that. Thank you. All right, so transportation program four. Um, the secretary position is just the, some of that does all the, helps do the routes. Um, answers transportation questions. It's built into um there, that one point oh. Um, I think there's two people that are built into this. So you see the cost that's built into it. The cost of the bus contract for twenty-two, twenty-three is estimated. Um, there's a percentage increase because our contract ends in uh, at the in, end of June of twenty-two this year. Um, and I'll speak to that in a moment. The other items that are in here, when we go to musical events or sporting events, you know, the the money that's in here for after-school clubs, um, we do a kindergarten orientation. Um, and H M S orientation to E O Smith, we do all those things. We pay for the transportation. It's not like a field trip. Um, we, we do those things. It's built in. One of the the um drivers, unfortunately, another increase in this budget is diesel. Um, and this is the bus increase. Wait till you see the heating increase. Um, the bus increase that we're anticipating right now is uh fifteen thousand dollars. I mean, it's, it's significant. When you think about what we've done in prior years, although I will say last year was a bit of a dream. Um, at a dollar sixty-four is a little bit of a dream, um, but there's an increase in it. And then we had a random diesel um credit from the pandemic that had been applied in a prior year. So you see the budget total here, um, and it's, this just speaks to, you know, what we get out of the transportation contract. One of the things I've, I've spoken about over the last couple of years is the potential in the future to um, work with E O Smith to have some sort of joint contract so that we can share buses. They share buses with some Mansfield uh buses at E O and they see some savings. I'll be honest, one of my concerns at this point of doing that and and the negotiations team is gonna hear this from me as well is that I'm not so sure that this is the year to merge and a couple of reasons why. Number one, with the merge, we would be doing a K, pre-K through eighth grade um routes. And that would mean it, as we continue this pandemic, um, we would have more people on buses. Um, either that or we would pay, be paying for more buses. That's number one. And number two um, is that we would have to adjust our schedules, our school schedules for the same start times. So meaning like they would drop off at Hall at eight o'clock and then drop off at Center at eight twenty. They would all ride the bus together. Um, I'm not so sure how much savings would be there. That's number one. And then the third thing is, is with the potential, I think we're gonna know within um I will say within twelve months, let's just say that, twelve months, the status of a school project, nothing renovation or new building. We're gonna know. And if it's a renovation or new building, it would be a great time then to, or or it's nothing, I think that would be a great time to figure out what do we want to do for our routes and joints um systems. One of the things I think that I I did not realize is, is this part of this conversation was contractually, we pay for two hours no matter what. So, even if we merge routes, and the route is an hour, we're still paying for two. That's something that's in a a lot of bus contracts. So, there's not gonna be significant savings. So, the committee's gonna hear from me that, I don't think, I've talked to Sharon Knoyers, the superintendent E.O. Smith about this. The recommendation that when the to look at this contract is to make sure there's language in this contract, the next bus contract, that says there's the opportunity for a re-opener. And what that would mean is, we could reopen the contract without penalty if we were going to renovation in merging to a pre-K through eighth, if we were gonna build a new building, or if we were gonna do nothing, and we wanted to merge just because we wanted to see if there would be savings of joining with E.O. Smith. And if we did those things, that is where we would then make the adjustment. So, that's a little kind of addition to, you know, we've talked about, we don't, we wouldn't see savings in the Wellington side. I'm gonna be honest with you. Where there would be savings in this is on the E.O. Smith side. In the end, it's the Wellington taxpayer. But it's not like, you know, that that, and we don't even see all the savings. It's across all the towns. So, if the E.O. Smith transportation were sixty thousand dollars cheaper for Wellington, it's not like Wellington sees a sixty thousand dollar decrease in their, theirs, in the budget for E.O. Smith. It goes across all the towns. So, it's there, it's something, but it's, I I'm not sure this is the year to consider it. So, this is what I've presented for the transportation budget for twenty-two, twenty-three, until maybe we learn some new information about, number one, pandemic, and where we're headed. Number two, future of of school buildings.
Can you repeat one more time, if the transportation contract is being renegotiated this year? It is this, so, so this whole year or this calendar year?
It's this, it's this spring for a July one kickoff. And and, you know, you could either consider extending a contract with a current provider, or you could consider doing a brand-new RFP. Those are really your two options. But you need a bus contract for July one of twenty-twenty-two. And so, I just built in a percentage increase into the cost of the.
So, in either case, since it's something that's quite timely, we'd be able to build in an opener or adjust the timing of the contract, so that we're not going in for a three-year contract. We don't know what we might decide.
Right, you could do a three-year contract, and as long as the opener's in it, and there's no penalty, it doesn't hurt you.
Yeah.
And I had, I had a conversation with with John Hipper and M&amp;J, just to, just to see if that was even, you know, what are the, what are the options here? Because is is that reopen or something that's possible? And he said, for M&amp;J, again, if it were M&amp;J, he said that's absolutely possible. And he even said, that is in the contract for E.O. Smith. So, the fact that it's already there, and E.O. Smith wrote it in theirs, because they might be able to connect with Wellington, and the fact that it was approved and went through is, I think that would be a real option.
Other questions on the transportation budget? Okay, seeing none, let's move on to Program Five.
All right, the last program of the night, Health Services. This is our our nurses. First thing I gotta say is, I I I think I think everyone knows how hard our teachers are working, or how how hard our staff are working. I don't think people really have a concept of what school nurses have been doing over the the last two years. The amount of work that these, in phone calls, and contact tracing, and documentation, the amount of work that they've been doing has been tremendous. And that's everybody. They have their separate program, though, and I just wanna say that, you know, I I work pretty closely with the nurses more than I ever have at either building because of COVID, and we're lucky to have the folks that we have working on this. I appreciate that. So, we have a nurse in each building. They're obviously required for all their students. And so, their salary is there. The conferences went up a hundred dollars, and and this was one of those things that drives me crazy. Like, one time that it was said that the center school nurse would have two hundred dollars in PD money, and the middle school nurse would have three hundred, and I, no one could answer that why. I just, that's the way it's always been. Well, that doesn't make sense. So, let's make it even. So, I just moved it up a hundred, so they both would have three hundred dollars for conference money. That could be, you know, joining a, you know, subscription for nurses, attending a conference, whatever it is. So, I just balanced it out. We have a medical advisor that's built into the budget. I will tell you, during COVID, our nurses have talked to our medical advisor more than ever. It's another resource for for them, and it's, it's a requirement. We have money in for some nurses. We've kept it flat, and some nurses are hard to come by, so thanks to the folks that do that for us as well. So, you can see the money that's in there for purchase services. The medical supplies, we increased a little bit, not a ton, but there's an increase in medical supplies. The audiometer, we probably could just eliminate that, but the, we left it in, because it's really one piece of equipment that might be, need to be replaced in the future, so we just left it on, but it's at zero. And then the the memberships are periodical, so whatever they need for their nurse's office to stay current, we put some money in. So, small increase of six thousand dollars to to really get a a really important program for us. They do all the screenings, health screenings, they bring in volunteers. They do all of our health documentation that required. Right now, let me tell you, their job description increased when we, with COVID. They're the ones that maintain testing, get testing results for staff, get testing results for students. They get all that information. And so, they've worked with our local health district, so it's a pretty straightforward plan. There's some of the other things that they do down there, you know, maintaining our building A.D.s with with fire chief. They've, they've done a lot of stuff. So, pretty straightforward program, small increase in grants. Questions about that? Was five programs too much in one night?
Well, I feel like the last two, the last two are pretty straightforward in general. We generally don't have a ton of questions about those, because they don't change much from year to year. Remember, we will have an opportunity both next week, when we get the next five presented. But again, the heavy load was all tonight. The next five, we can also ask questions about the first five. This is not your last chance to ask questions about these five, so I just wanted to clarify, because not all of us have been through a budget process before.
Right, we can put that on as one of the first budget items on the agenda, just to say, questions from Programs One through Five. And I can, I I will share out the responses for for questions you've had too, so we can make sure they're they're part of your meeting.
And that'll be good, because it'll give us a chance to dive a little deeper into the numbers. Okay.
Anything else on there?
Um, nope, we only adjourn after Program Five, unless there are additional comments or questions before we go tonight. Okay, seeing none, I move that we adjourn the meeting.
I second.
Thank you, Laura. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, abstentions, passes unanimously. I was not expecting any of any. Brianna, you made it through your first full-budget hearing.